The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the matters reflected in our open session agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance which will be led tonight by Councilman Ed Selich to be followed by the invocation by Mr. Frank Carpenter.
Please follow me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you bow your heads and join me in invocation. Dear God, we ask for wisdom and understanding here tonight, for patience with each person and resolve to do what's right. May we be worthy students of all we've been entrusted to, our care and supervision on this night and hitherto. May we choose the higher path, whatever it may be, and always strive to uphold our honor and our dignity. May we be ever mindful of the privilege we share to live and serve in such a place unrivaled anywhere. From the backdrop of the Green Hills to the ocean's roiling foam, we thank you for the beauty of this fair city we call home. May we represent her citizens who have called us here again to the best of our ability and with all our hearts. Amen.
The first order of business on tonight's agenda is to honor a group of citizens who truly were the founding mothers and fathers of their neighborhood as it came into our city and who can look back with a substantial level of accomplishment at things that are in this community today that will benefit future generations that are there because they put them there. And in that, we are here to honor the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment agency project advisory committee. So if I could invite Tim Stokes, the immediate past chairman, and the members of the committee and their past chairman to come forward. I'm going to read this resolution and then come down and take a picture. Whereas the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment agency project area committee PAC has been recognized by the city of Newport Beach and the county of Orange for their dedicated leadership in Santa Ana Heights. And whereas Tim Stokes has served as chairman of the PAC since 2009, having been appointed by supervisor Jim Silva to the PAC in August 2005. And whereas, along with PAC members Mary Sluka, Rick Dayton, Gary Hall, Richard Moriarty, Gary Golson, Stokes, and others have served the county and the city by providing sound advice regarding neighborhood projects that enhance the quality of life for residents of Santa Ana Heights. And whereas this talented and devoted group of people has acted to protect and preserve the provisions of the Santa Ana Heights specific plan and its outlined projects. And whereas the PAC was instrumental in establishing Newport Beach Fire Station Number Seven, the Santa Ana Heights Station is dedicated on September 10, 2007. And whereas PAC has worked diligently to bring forward the annexation of the east side and west side of Santa Ana Heights to the city of Newport Beach. And whereas PAC, after extensive time and effort, persevered in convincing the city and county to fund the construction of the utility undergrounding project along Cypress Street and Mesa Drive. And whereas PAC devoted themselves to preserving open space by saving land for and assisting in the design of Mesa Birch Park, which opened in the fall of 2009, for all residents of Newport Beach and Santa Ana Heights to enjoy. And whereas, under the leadership of current chairman Tim Stokes and former chairpersons Roger Summers and Barbara Venezia, the PAC advocated for the efficient and effective completion of projects that had languished in the planning phase for years and have now come to fruition. And whereas, the past and present members of the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment agency PAC never faltered nor gave up in their efforts to fight for the community against all obstacles. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Newport Beach commemorates and thanks Chairman Tim Stokes, members Mary Sluka, Rick Dayton, Gary Hall, Richard Moriarty, Gary Golson, and past chairpersons Roger Summers and Barbara Venezia for their hard work and dedication as volunteered to serve in the Santa Ana Heights community. In witness thereof, I have set my hand on the seal of the city of Newport Beach this ninth day of March 2010. Congratulations.
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank you for this nice proclamation tonight. Yes, the PAC did sunset as of its last meeting in last month, and we're happy to still continue to do some projects up in our area and look forward to the 900 residents that we've included in the annexation. And I'd just like personally to thank my neighbors and friends for their tenacity and ability to, as I say, persevere and get projects done for our wonderful neighborhood and continue to keep the equestrian area. I know people don't understand that we are still a horse community, and thank you Nancy for riding with Morgan the other day, and that was a wonderful trip that we had there. So, but thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again because it's rare sometimes that you can look back at things that you actually helped accomplish and bring about. And I think the record of accomplishment by the PAC in Santa Heights is really stellar and one the community's going to enjoy for years and generations to come. So, congratulations. I would now like to invite Dwight Delgado from the United States Census Bureau to come forward, who has a presentation to make regarding the census.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing me up so fast. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. My name is Dwight Delgado, and I am with the US Census. I am responsible for helping the city of Newport Beach get its most accurate count yet. The census is part of the US Constitution. You're going to find it in Article One, Section Two. And, you know, in my opinion, it's the basis for our democracy. It goes along the lines of one person, one vote. And I think it's just our civic duty to be involved with the census. So, thank you. The census has been pushing four key messages. The key messages are: the census is safe, easy, important, and everyone counts. What I mean by the census is safe is that the census is confidential. All the information that you provide is not going to be accessible by anybody, not the IRS, not the FBI, no immigration program is going to be able to access your information. Not even the President of the United States can get access to your information. This is so important to us that I am actually liable if I provide any of the information out to anybody. I'm liable to be sued for $250,000, and I can go to jail for five years if I provide any of this confidential information. This census is very easy. It's the easiest census we've had yet, and it's a big thing to say that because the census has been around since 1790. So, the census, this year it's 10 questions, all in one form. As you can see, the questions are very simple. I only listed seven because in my opinion, some of the questions are a little repetitive. So, those are the main questions on the census form. It should only take you 10 minutes. The census is very important. The way I see it, the census is important for two reasons: for power and money. What I mean by power is political power. The House of Representatives has 435 members, and they're distributed based on population. So, it depends, our population can change the number of representatives we have in California. We might lose or we might add seats depending on that. Money, what I mean by money is that every year, the census, through the census, the federal government gives out $435 billion throughout the states depending on population, and that's every year. So, if you take a look at it every 10 years, that's $4 trillion that we give out based on census data. Everyone counts. What I mean, what I want to emphasize with that is that specifically now, there's a lot of people who are moving around in homes, whatever the issue might be. You might have grandparents, you might have friends, couch surfers, or whatever it is. We need to include them all in the form. If they have nowhere else to live, let's include them on that residence that the census form is mailed to. This is what the census form looks like. What I've seen in previous presentations is that not many people show what the census form looks like. So, I want everybody to see what the census form looks like. That's it. Just 10 questions. And let me give you some key dates. If you have not received the census introduction letter as of yet, you can expect to receive it within the next few days. But please mail it back by April 1. That's our census day. That's the day that we all push for. If we don't have a big turnout for April 1, if nobody mails it back, well, we expect about 65 percent to. We're going to send census workers such as myself to go door-to-door and help the residences complete the form. This is not a big issue for this community, but I will say this. There are some communities that are gated, some communities that are private, that sometimes they don't want to give out information. So, we do target those communities, specifically in this city. What can you do to help improve the census count? Promote the census. Promote the census any way that you can. If you have any city events, if you have a website, you can put it on. Give us a link to our website. And that's it. That's my contact information. If you want to get ahold of me, there's my phone number, there's my email. That's it. If any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. I know I received my advisory letter to expect my census form next week. So, it's an important thing. It's important to the community. It's important to keep federal and state dollars coming to Newport Beach. So, please, everyone, take the time to fill it out. Mr. Webb?
You know, there's one very important thing that I rely on for the census that you haven't mentioned. And you did mention it started in 1790, but every 10 years, there's records of families. You aren't going to be able to take advantage of it, but in 75 years, your children and grandchildren will be able to look at census records and find out some of this information that may be lost. I personally have gotten a tremendous amount of information about my ancestors from census data. And it's something that is not that well-known by a lot of people, but I think it's 75 years it has to be kept confidential. But, so, we are building a legacy for the future with the census.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado.
Thank you.
Let me, our city clerk is going to display a gift that we received. Let me turn the lights on. This week from the New Japan Women's Association from the city of Okazaki. As many of you know, Okazaki is Newport Beach's sister city. These are paper cranes. They are sent to us by the New Japan Women's Association, which is a non-governmental organization in special consultative status with the United Nations Economic and Social Council. Nationwide in Japan, the association has more than 200,000 members, and it works to advance world peace. And so, we're very pleased to display this gift from our sister city in Japan in the interest of promoting peace and harmony throughout the world. Thank you, Lady Lani. And the next item is notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, tomorrow evening, the airport working group will be holding their annual meeting. It's taking place at Balboa Yacht Club at 5:30 PM. And AWG is one of the four signatories of our settlement agreement. The others being spawned, the city and the county. And that agreement is the primary vehicle by which the city exercises control over airport impacts. The speaker tomorrow evening is Mayor Pro Tem Larry Agron of Irvine. That's right, Larry Agron. And he's going to be talking to us about, or the community, about regional transportation, which is part of kind of how airports interact with transportation in general. And at the mayor's request, I attended a conference in San Diego, and it really reinforced the extraordinary controls that our community has in place relative to John Wayne Airport, and something that our citizens group has worked very diligently on over the years. So, if you can make the AWG tomorrow night, I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, I'd like to give a shout-out to the McGonigals. You'll remember that we were looking at their project, which abuts Begonia Park, and was a polarizing project for the neighborhood. It was approved 5-2 by the council, the EIR, so they could go ahead with their building. And at that point, a neighbor approached them with a different design. And I want to give them credit, that they took a serious look at it and said they would certainly consider it if a couple of conditions could be met, one of which was not to go to the coastal commission, the other was not to add a lot of time to something that had already been a delayed project. Unfortunately, in discussions with staff, we couldn't meet those conditions, but I did think it was gracious of them to at least make this a consideration. Secondly, I have something, and the city attorney and city manager are going to have to help me on this, but there are two police issues that I have, and I think if I have them, probably residents do. One was that I noticed that in recent demonstrations up at UCI, Newport Beach police were there. And since these are always very politically resonant issues, I'd like to know what our policies are and how we handle that. And secondly, there was an article in several local papers about a police, one of our police personnel and a case that got thrown out. And this is a personnel issue, so we have to handle it. I know very delicately, but I do know that our residents, I've gotten calls, I want our residents to know that we take these things seriously. And so, to give an overview of how we handle something like this, the steps we take, and then how the residents can find out what the eventual outcome is, I'd appreciate that.
I can address that police issue briefly for you, if you'd like.
All right, that'd be lovely.
We're aware of it. The office of the city attorney has been involved in assisting the police department related to a warrant issue for a high-profile case. There were challenges to a warrant, which is a standard challenge that happens in criminal defense matters. A motion was made essentially to quash the warrant. There were some irregularities in the handling of the warrant and some affidavits, but there was nothing that rose to the level in our opinion of any misconduct or inaccuracy. Ultimately, the court determined that the warrant should be essentially thrown out and the case dismissed if a confidential informant was not identified. The district attorney agrees that the court was wrong, and that the district attorney has filed an appeal, and our office has reviewed the issues and agree with this district attorney's assessment. We support the district attorney pursuing the appeal and addressing the issue of the warrant, and we frankly agree with that analysis. And we're looking forward to hopefully the Court of Appeal reversing that decision. So, we take it very seriously. All of these types of issues are reviewed from a professional standard standpoint at the police department, and where appropriate, the office of the city attorney is involved to see what's the best way to address it for the benefit of the city.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Gardner will be happy to bring back just an informational item on how we share our resources when things like the riot demonstration is happening.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Yeah, oh, okay. Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Hen?
I just have one thing. A few months ago, we considered a fairly controversial item here at the dais regarding a use permit application by Chronic Taco to expand into a sports bar arrangement at the shopping center at Balboa Boulevard and PCH. And ultimately, we denied the request to be able to do that expansion. But along the way, it was noted by several residents that the condition of that shopping center was poor at best, with lots of things that were wrong with it. And I'm very happy to report that city staff followed up on that very diligently, code enforcement and our planning department, working with the owner and the property manager of that property. And today, I drove through it yesterday, actually, there's new landscaping all around that parking lot. The trash enclosure issues in the back have been cleaned up and contained much better, and overall, the shopping center looks a lot nicer. And I guess there's still a few things yet to be done with striping and whatnot in the parking lot. And so, I wanted to give my thanks to staff for really diligently following up on that, even though that's not where everything started to begin with. So, thanks again.
Mike, did you want to mention the press conference and the initiative?
Oh, yes. Thanks, Nancy. Yeah. Nancy Gardner and I also attended a press conference on Saturday that was called to publicize an initiative that is in the signature gathering mode right now. It's an initiative that would, in effect, prohibit the state from taking further action to take money from local governmental units like cities and counties in order to balance the state budget, something they've been pretty handy at, even as late as this last fiscal year, when they borrowed property tax money from the cities. This initiative has been endorsed by the city of Newport Beach, as well as at least two-thirds of the cities, I think, in the entire state of California, supported by the League of Cities. And I think it's an essential element of defending ourselves against these sort of over-the-transom attacks on our treasury. You know, we that manage cities, by and large, have done a pretty good job actually balancing our budgets. In fact, truly balancing our budgets. Our state hasn't. And it seems like the only way to stop that is to fence them off from additional sources of revenue that they can take that they really shouldn't. So, we're supporting that. We were glad to be there. Nancy and I were there, and as well as Huntington Beach and Costa Mesa. And we're very hopeful. They've gathered 650,000 signatures, I think. They don't have too much farther to go to technically qualify for the initiative, and we'll be very supportive of that.
Thank you. Mr. Rosansky?
Yeah, if you'll indulge me, I did have one announcement. It's more of a fun nature. Councilman Selich and I will be appearing, I guess is the best word to say, at the Bungalow Restaurant on Monday from 5:30 to 7:30 to support a film festival, Newport Beach Film Festival fundraiser that they're going to be having there. So, all, we're going to be bartenders, I guess, celebrity bartenders, as they're calling it. I don't know how much of a celebrity I am. My wife says I'm a celebrity, and my own mind. But, in any event, all the tips that we get will be donated to the film festival. So, please come down and support that event. Film festival is a great thing for our city, and, you know, with the economy the way it is, they certainly can use all the help they can. I think the film festival this year is towards the end of April. So, we'll hope to see you there, and we want 50s and 100s. I don't want to see any of these little bills. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the pleasure on Tuesday of last week to attend the breakfast that is associated with the Toshiba Golf Tournament, where Corey Pavin spoke. And later, to attend the tournament at Newport Beach Country Club, we had record attendance on Friday, and based on what I saw on Sunday, record attendance for the final round, and raised over $900,000 for Hoag Hospital. So, it was a tremendous community success. You know, it was tape delayed. You could watch it on the golf channel when you got home Sunday night, and it was great to see our city on national television. I heard from some of my colleagues on the east coast, where the weather is quite a bit worse, who were envious of Newport Beach. So, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars in publicity for the city, and a very successful event for Hoag. Councilman Rosansky and I were privileged to take part in Youth and Government Day, where we had some very bright students who came and assumed the positions as council members and city staff members and debated the issues. I think everybody in the audience would have been very, very proud of them. And-
Wait, you forgot the most important part.
Yes.
They tried to fire the city manager at the end of the meeting.
And I think the city manager successfully resisted.
I think he did.
Yes. So, just one more follow-up. Are we smarter than 5th graders? You wouldn't know it sometimes.
Yeah, just barely, I think, yeah.
And then finally, one of the things that I've been talking with the city manager about as he is implementing his efforts to make our government more efficient is the rule of technology. And the application of technology to improve the efficiency of what we do in the city government is profound. And he is moving forward with some initiatives, and he and I have talked about the idea of forming a citizens' technology task force, which would take advantage of some of the tremendous resources we have in the community among our citizens on the technology front, to share ideas on how we can make government more efficient and more effective. And so, what I'd like, Dave, is to come back at our next meeting with an agenda item which will allow the council to discuss and potentially form a technology task force, which would have a clear charge in about a 90-day, 120-day window to evaluate technology and report back to the city manager on steps that we can take to improve our efficiency in city government. Okay. The next is the consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 10, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Selich?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number three, and also item number seven. I'd just like the staff to maybe explain to the folks that are watching, particularly those on Balboa Island, what that study's going to do and what the timing of it is.
Okay. Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Hen?
I do not wish to pull item number four, but I would like to at least make a quick comment about it. This is the item having to do with the building of tsunami sirens on the peninsula, which I'm happy to report, we have an item in front of us tonight to approve letting the contract for the construction of that, which we hope will be done before the summer season. But we did have an illustration that sort of further underscores the need for redundancy and the ability to assure that we can notify residents when we have problems like that, in that this, it became apparent in this last tsunami advisory that we had a week or so ago, that we need to make improvements in our 911, our reverse 911 calling system, which only unfortunately was able to call out about a third of the calls that were attempted. And I'm very happy with how staff handled that whole thing. That's really not the point. The point is, it's nice to have another system to warn residents that will be up and running here very shortly. The other thing is, it's coming in way under budget. We're going to spend about $150,000 for this when the budget called for about $200,000. And so, just another example of why it's a good time, if we have good projects, to proceed with them.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle?
I did want to pull item number four. Some concerns with some of the costs. And then, secondly, was item number, I'm sorry, isn't number seven, I have the concern with the costs. And then, item number four, I wanted to pull as well.
Did you want to pull item number seven?
Okay, yes, I did. I actually want to pull four and seven.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Webb?
None.
And I have none? Okay. Does staff have any items to pull? Is there any member of the audience who would like to see an item on the consent calendar pulled besides items three, four, or seven? Is there any public discussion on any items on the consent calendar other than three, four, or seven? Seeing none, I will bring it back for a motion. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I would move that we- I would move that we accept the items on the consent calendar, 1 through 10, except for items 3, 4, and 7.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next item is item 3.
Yes, thank you. I guess my question on this is, is it really wise to relinquish all of these funds to the school district? That maybe we should be keeping, I don't know, say, half of this money in reserve for other improvements that might be needed in Benita Canyon, or upgrades of facilities, or things of that nature, rather than giving all of that money back to the school district?
Councilmember Selich, and mayor and council members, I would like a sense from the council as to whether or not everyone agrees with that approach. And I think it's a fair question, and had you not pulled it, I would have asked for this be pulled, because actually, Mr. Rosansky and Mr. Hen asked similar questions. So, I get the sense that council would like us to explore other options. And I think one path might be to designate a council member or two to work with staff and the school district to decide what appropriate uses of funds are. We still have to answer a question, it's not completely answered in my mind, as to whether or not the time has passed to look at projects. But because it's uncertain in my mind, I would like to have that additional time to review that. And if indeed the council wanted to, indeed thinks it should be reopened, and designated a council member or two to look at that with me, I think that would be wise.
I think that would be an excellent idea.
Yeah, my understanding was, is this was subject to an agreement with the school district in terms of how these funds are going to be spent. But if there's some ambiguity about that, then we should continue this item until we answer those questions, I think. And so, I will, since it's Benita Canyon Park, with the council's indulgence, designate myself, since that's in District 7, if that's okay?
And I would ask for a continuance of one month instead of to the next meeting, because I think that gives us enough time to understand.
Is there a motion to continue then?
I'll move that. I should let Councilmember Diggle say what's.
Yeah, I would just note, because we've discussed this, I think Atlanta, also a finance committee, that, you know, we have had a long historic partnership with the school district, and, you know, there are improvements that will come right back into our community. There is, I think, a project that merits improvement. So, as far as the use of the money, I don't take issue with that.
Yeah, as I as well. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that there's nothing that we can use the money for, that we're going to have to now dip into the general fund or find other money to make up for this. So, you know, I think there is a parking problem over Corona Del Mar High School, and they spill over in the neighborhood. And to the extent we can create more spaces there, and we don't need the money ourselves, and they can benefit by it, I don't have a problem with that. I just, you know, just got to make sure that our needs are met before we can meet their needs.
So, the motion is to continue this for one month, and I will work with Dave on evaluating some of these questions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter?
Second.
I guess I do now. All right, seeing no one in the audience, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 4. Councilmember Diggle?
Yes, the tsunami siren. Citizens have been asking me, so when you hear the siren, you know, what do you do? If you could just maybe communicate, I think it'd be very helpful to citizens as to, you know, what they would then do, and how it fits into maybe just a whole, you know, public messaging type of effort.
Thank you, Councilmember Diggle. As Mayor Pro Tim Hen indicated, the siren is one aspect of maybe a three- or a four-legged stool associated with tsunami advisories. One thing that folks can do, who are listening tonight, and this alludes to a little bit to some of the concern we had two weekends ago over folks not getting enough notification, you can get onto the Alert OC website and add your cell phone number, or another landline number. So, that's one leg of the stool, is the reverse 911 system, otherwise known, again, as Alert OC. The second is certainly our public safety personnel, the police, the lifeguards, the fire department, that would be activated in the event of a tsunami warning to help evacuate folks. Generally, though, that when you hear the siren, the siren is there for a purpose, and as I understand it, it's an evacuation siren, not to sit and stop and look and just wait for further direction, but to get off the higher peninsula, to higher ground, based on the other signs. And I guess that's the fourth leg of the stool, is our evacuation route signs, which are posted, especially on Balboa Boulevard and Newport Boulevard. And all of this should be better explained on our website, and that's something we'll work on.
So, if an incident, let's say on a busy summer day on the peninsula, what, how many people do you have on the peninsula on a summer day? Over 100,000?
We could easily have over 100,000.
Okay.
So, that would be all of the, all of our resources, all of our lifeguard, our police resources, our ability to green light all the signals off the peninsula. Those are all things that we would work on doing. And that's part of our traffic management program. It's not, as the Public Works Director will note, it's not in place now, but we can certainly, for now, station public safety officers there in the intersections.
Because I know even, you know, folks coming into Corona Del Mar High School every school day, 2,000 cars, we have the help of the police, and it's still a lot of backup. So, the thought of getting 100,000 people off the peninsula, I think that's really the question, you know, our plan, and how the siren is going to, you know, alert people to have that happen.
We'll be relying a lot on timing. If this is an earthquake close to us, that's a slip-type of plate that causes a tsunami very soon and fast, we're not going to have the kind of success that we would have if we have two hours warning or one hour warning. So, it's something we all need to be aware of. Dave, I might add to that, the police do have an emergency evacuation plan now for the peninsula. That can be better communicated, it can always be better communicated. We have done that communication from time to time. But in addition to that, there is also the instruction of what television and radio stations to tune to right away for more information. So, if you're in a position where you can do that, you can get more information when you hear the warning. So, these are all things that we need to continue to reinforce and communicate as we can. And then as we improve that plan with things like synchronized traffic lights and better ad hoc control measures, why, you know, we'll communicate that too. But we can do better. We can always do better. Additionally, too, we'll be testing the system, obviously. So, the test is an opportunity to remind people what they might do, and also ensure that when they know it's a test, that they don't actually implement the plan, but they become aware of what they might do if this were an actual emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item 4?
Move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any citizen comment, public comment on item 4? Right, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 7.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this particular attachment, I was noticing, for example, they have their mileage at 55 cents, and I know the IRS rate is 50 cents for 2010. So, is there some independent calculation that we're using that would justify 10% higher than IRS?
And ask maybe the Public Works Director to comment on that.
Yeah, you know, we didn't think it was that significant, because actually, when you multiply out the costs, it's like an initial $10. But, yeah, you know, I think various companies do their own rates. They're not subject to the same rules that we have as public agency. We could certainly question that. I think it was probably something that we thought was insignificant, and in order to proceed and get this contract done, it was probably overlooked.
Okay, appreciate that. And then the other one is, in looking at the billing schedule, a lot of the, you know, there's multiple items, multiple employees, and if you look at the schedule, everyone's sort of billing even hours, 10, 12, 8, and 2, which is kind of a red flag. So, I would hope, I know we have a new auditor, in-house auditor, she can just really scrutinize, you know, any invoices that come through. Right now, it's just a proposal, but at some point, it will turn into an invoice. So, if we can really look carefully at those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll bet if you just crossed out 55 cents and wrote in 50 cents, they'd still sign it.
Is there a motion on item 7?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Selich?
Yeah, Steve, could you explain exactly what this study's going to do, and then what the timing on it's going to be, and when we're going to have a report back?
Sure, Councilman Selich and members of council. Yeah, the timing on, well, the scope that's included on this project is essentially, you know, we've done a lot of great studies over the years, involved with other projects, like the harbor area management plan and others. We've also had some independent studies done by outside UCI. A professor over there has done some significant work looking at Balboa Island. So, we thought it really was a smart thing to do, to try to get our arms around the whole project, and kind of consolidate all that information, and come up with an action plan of what we need to do in the future regarding sea level rises and potential spots along the seawall that might need our attention. Our thought was to kind of come up with some ideas, figure out what might need to be done, and then ultimately come back to the community and discuss what the next steps are going to be, as well as funding, potentially funding a future project. That is essentially what we're doing there.
Okay, so we'll know in pretty good detail exactly what the condition of all the seawalls around Balboa Island are once we get done with this study.
That's correct.
Okay, and when do you expect it to be completed?
You know, I'm not exactly sure. I hadn't checked that, but I could get that for you.
Okay, I saw, I couldn't figure it out exactly, but it looked like maybe December, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and I think when we want to meet back with the community, we'll probably want to wait till after summer anyway, so we can get folks together and discuss this. So, that would probably be a good timeframe.
Okay. Okay, I'll move the action.
Second. Is there any public discussion on item 7? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
It's now time for oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Mr. Selich?
I have none this evening.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hen?
I do. The Economic Development Committee met, and we did, the Executive Committee, I should say, met, and we did have a discussion of two items worthy of note, and that is, it looks like we're making very good progress, ameliorating the problems with the Belmaray Shopping Center at Dover and PCH. So, we're very glad for that. Hopefully, we'll be moving ahead very shortly with true cleanup and getting that back in shape.
Dumpsters are there today.
And it's good. And then we did make note of the fact that the rehab facility at 1810 West Oceanfront, we did have an abatement agreement on that facility that called for it to be closed for purposes of providing services by February the 28th, and in fact, it did close. And so, that facility is in the process now of being cleaned up and emptied, and will be reused for what purpose, we're not sure, but the prior purpose has now been completed. With regard to the Finance Committee, we did have a very full agenda, and just so that our fellow council members know, we pretty well stroked out our entire meeting schedule for the coming year of items that are going to need to be addressed. I am happy to note that the budget process for the fiscal 2010-11 year is very much on track to be approved, as it has to be, by mid-year. There will still be tough decisions to be made, and we'll be finding out more about that at our next council meeting. We did also approve, moving forward with our consultant, on a cost study program that will be analyzing our internal costs for allocation purposes and for the setting of fees. But to do it on a rolling basis, so that it's not an every-five-year cataclysmic event for the city, but to be done a piece at a time, to make the impact much smoother, and give staff a better chance to do that job more carefully. In addition to that, we did have a very good, as I think Councilmember Diggle mentioned, a very good presentation from our internal auditor, our, I guess it's, she's our internal outside auditor. She audits revenue that the city is entitled to receive, amongst which is transient occupancy tax, the hotel bed tax, as well as many other things. And she's had good success already in saving money for the city. That's an essential function that we do need to be prudent about. And then lastly, we did see a very interesting discussion about a different way to do insurance for, project insurance, for the new Civic Center project, that at least we think has the potential to save significant amounts of money for the city. It's called owner-controlled insurance program, OSIP. And so, we did encourage staff to move forward with a feasibility study on that alternative that we'll all have a chance to look at more carefully, to see if it really does make sense. And I did want to applaud staff for exercising, again, good creativity, looking for new ways, outside-the-box thinking, to be more efficient and save money for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Diggle?
Yes, I chair our Citizens Aviation Committee. It consists of residents and also councilmembers Selich and Webb. And I'm so proud of everyone for their participation and attendance. And one of the issues that the committee recently took up was the impacts from the Duke I RNAV procedures. And the impact was, they were flying over residential neighborhoods instead of over the back bay. And so, with the assistance of the county, the city and the county got together, and we went to the FAA. And I want to make it clear that the airport very much went to bat for our citizens, and there's going to be a positive result for Newport Beach, and that is a Duke II procedure. Now, it's a technical fix, and one of our committee members, Jim Dunlap, a commercial pilot, helped with the communication at the FAA. And Jim explained that there was an arbitrary turn at a 542-foot altitude that was unnecessary. And so, with the Duke II procedure, the turn is going to be initiated at a certain vector. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for the very collaborative effort, and that we were able to get this result for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, the Media and Communications Committee met. This city, like other cities, is getting into all the new media, so we can all be in touch constantly, for those of you who are enthusiastic about it. Anyway, we're setting a lot of policies, and they will come to the council in the next month, so that we can be sure we have the necessary controls to protect ourselves, because these can also be a lot of trouble and a can of worms if they're not handled correctly.
Thank you. Councilmember Webb?
I have none.
And I have none. The next item is Public Hearings, item 11, award of a non-exclusive solid waste collection franchise to Universal Waste Systems. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I gave Mr. Harmon the night off, knowing how exciting these items are. So, you have the staff report. This is, would be, I think, our 25th or 26th non-exclusive franchisee for commercial waste hauling. So, unless you had any other questions, that would be my presentation.
I move the recommended action.
Let me open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wants to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Second. Move the recommended action.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is item 12, Old Newport Boulevard General Plan Amendment, 328, 332, and 340 Old Newport Boulevard. Is there a staff report, Mr. City Manager?
There is, Mr. Mayor. Jaime Maria will give you, give the staff report.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing for Mr. Merloza's report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to change the permitted FLRA ratio from 0.5 to 1.0 for three properties that he owns within the Old Newport Boulevard corridor area of the city. Concurrent with his general plan amendment request, the applicant is proposing to consolidate the three parcels into one parcel, demolish the existing buildings on site, and develop in a 25,000-square-foot medical office building. To provide a brief background, it's important to note that prior to the 2006 General Plan Amendment, or Comprehensive Update, the commercial properties within the Old Newport corridor were permitted increased intensities of 0.75 with lot consolidation, and up to 1.4 FAR for mixed-use properties that involve lot consolidation. Under those inscriptions, the property owner began acquiring properties to develop a mixed-use project. During the general plan update process, the ability to develop mixed-use projects, as well as the increased intensities for lot consolidation, were removed from the general plan. That was done in an attempt to reduce vehicle trips within the new general plan, and in recognition that the development trend in the area tended to be going towards medical office development. Unfortunately, the property owner was unaware of the Unfortunately, the property owner was unaware of the changes, and ultimately, with the adoption of the general plan update, the owner states that his properties became financially infeasible to develop at 1.5 FAR, and thus triggering his general plan amendment request tonight. I stated in detail in the staff report, the applicant's proposed plans do illustrate that it is physically feasible to develop the property at a 1.0 FAR. However, it does require utilizing a majority of the building envelope to accommodate the project and requires a number of deviations from development standards. The applicant will be sharing a PowerPoint presentation in which they'll be going over the project description, so I'm just going to touch upon the required approvals. The application includes a request for a modification permit to allow two levels of subterranean parking to encroach within the rear alley setback. The encroachment is necessary to accommodate the number of required parking spaces within the constraints of the relatively shallow lot depth. These encroachments will occur entirely below grade and will not be visible from the alley. Also, due to the constraints with trying to provide all the code-required parking, the applicant is also proposing to take advantage of a provision within the Old Newport Boulevard specific plan that allows the city to grant a parking credit equal to the number of parking spaces that are available along the project frontage. The applicant had originally proposed to take credit for seven parking spaces. However, the city traffic engineer has identified a site distance issue associated with three of those parking spaces. Therefore, the maximum credit that'd be granted tonight would be a total of four parking spaces. The final project design will need to be reduced in area by 600 square feet to accommodate for the loss of those three spaces. The applicant is also requesting a use permit to allow an elevator and stairwell enclosure to exceed the 32-foot base height limit. Although the building has been designed to include stepbacks to conform to the natural topography of the site in order to provide a clear entry to the building from Old Newport, the enclosure is required to be located at the northwest corner where it exceeds the height limit by approximately 15 feet. The project also requires the approval of a traffic study pursuant to the city's traffic phasing ordinance. The traffic study indicates that the 10-study intersections within the City of Newport Beach will continue to operate at satisfactory levels of service after project implementation. Additionally, the traffic study performed a cumulative traffic analysis and included seven intersections within the City of Costa Mesa and concluded that there will be also a less-than-significant impact to traffic circulation at those intersections and that no improvements would be necessary. And finally, initial study and mitigated negative declaration were also prepared for the project and have determined that the project will have a less-than-significant impact on the environment. The mitigation measures identified are feasible, and compliance with the mitigation monitoring reporting program have been conditioned as a project condition to approval. Sirius Environmental prepared the document, and Wendy Lockwood is here in attendance tonight to answer any questions regarding the environmental document. And finally, the proposed general plan, the mitigated negative declaration, and related application requests were reviewed by the Planning Commission at the February 4th Planning Commission hearing, and with a majority vote of six to one, they recommended approval of the project at the proposed 1.0 FAR. The Planning Commission felt that the project was generally in scale with the newer development that has occurred in the area, and that the project will achieve the Old Newport Boulevard specific plan goals and policies for redevelopment in the area, lot consolidation, and eliminating the ingress and egress from the alley. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Merlo, at this time? Mr. Selich?
Jaime, did the Planning Commission recommendation include the 600-foot reduction, or did that come after the Planning Commission?
No, that was discussed at the hearing. They recognized that because they couldn't take credit for those three parking spaces, that the project design would have to be reduced by 600 square feet.
That's the Planning Commission recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Let me invite the applicant to come forward then to make a presentation, and if I could, if you could limit it to, will 15 minutes be sufficient?
Yes.
All right, and then we'll ask the public to comment, and we'll give the public five minutes each. I understand there'll be some people who'll be speaking on behalf of some of the other people in the audience, and we will commence the hearing. Please state your name for the record, Doctor.
My name is Emmanuel Shulian. Thank you for listening to me. Good evening, Mayor Curry, councilmember, staff, and public at large. My name is Emmanuel Shulian. I'm a cardiologist, and I have practiced in this city for 15 years. First, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the staff of this city for their collaboration for the past three years with me and my staff in order to bring in front of you this compromised plan that would help, to my opinion, me, the city, and the public at large. I moved here to Newport Beach from New York City 16 years ago. I made this move knowing that this is the best place to live in this country, and I'm a very proud resident of this city. I have done everything in my power during the last 16 years to make this city a better place for myself, my family, and my patients. For tonight's hearing, though, I'm talking to you as a property owner and not a cardiologist. It's hard for me to do, because in my heart, I'm a cardiologist only. I am a perfectionist, because what I do is fix hearts, and everything I do has to be perfect, otherwise there are consequences. As a perfectionist, I have been also smitten by the desire to fix buildings. Might be wrong, but I like to do that. In fact, I have fixed three medical buildings. I have done the interior design, including my last, my current office on 300 West Coast Highway. If you don't know where it is, it used to be a Chili's building. Looks a little better now. Soon after moving to Newport Beach 15 years ago, I bought a small building on Old Newport Boulevard in order to put my office there. It was a dilapidated building. I fixed all inside of it, of course, spent a lot of money, but it was a great office for my patient. My patient liked it because it was a homey environment. Because of the fact that I knew that the area is mixed-use and it has incentives in terms of joining lots and has the rights to build a mixed building, I acquired eventually, with all my savings, the two adjacent buildings, and eventually had three buildings that I have now. For the next few years, I went with the help of my architect and staff in and out of the city and tried to put it together, put together a mixed-use building that includes condos, right, condos on the alley side and a medical building on the medical side. While we were doing this, my last meeting was with the city, is a large meeting with the staff in April 2006, and while my architect was going in and out of city and talking to them, the general plan was approved. The general plan did a drastic change in all my potential rights. From 1.4 potential, the FAR was reduced to 0.5. The residential component was all taken away, and the lot consolidation incentive was all taken away. Of course, I have to tell you that I was shocked and surprised. It took me a while to take, to get myself together after that, but since, I have to tell you that my projects have been idle. It has been idle, as most of the development on Old Newport Boulevard, in fact, for the past few years. I have been losing about $50,000 a year on this project, because you can't make it better, and you can't rent it well because of how terrible it looks. I'm here to ask for your help to realize my dream and heal this situation for the benefit of the city, the area that looks terrible, and the county, and the people that would be using it. The project that I'm offering, that we are offering with my team tonight is a product of a close collaboration between our team, the city staff, the planning department, public works department, as well as representatives of neighborhood. It is an offer to fix the problems that exist. It would eliminate the fundamental flaw that exists today in that neighborhood, which is heavy traffic through the alley from professional spaces, through the alley where people are living, children are playing. Our plan that is proposed would eliminate all traffic from the residential area, but and divert all of it to Old Newport Boulevard, which is a professional street. In order to accomplish that, I have, we have compromised and we have eliminated any plans for condos not to increase the density of, in the neighborhood. Our plan would also eliminate a very bad thing, to my opinion, which is existence of dilapidated buildings in the heart of the city, replacing them with a beautiful, functional building. Of course, economic growth of that neighborhood and new taxes would develop thereafter. This building would be a purely medical building in walking distance to Hope Hospital. My group plans to move our cardiology and preventive practice to that building. It would serve the medical needs of elderly in our neighborhood. My team has worked very closely with the city and the representatives of the neighborhood in order to come up with this design. We have done various studies recommended by the city, including a comprehensive environmental assessment of aesthetics, noise, without any negative findings and without any mitigation needed. We also have conducted a comprehensive traffic study indicating no significant impact. On February 2010, the Planning Commission of this city reviewed the project in detail. After a long discussion, they approved the project with a vote of six to one. The only one that was against the project, he didn't look, liked the look of the project. He thought it's too square, but it's a personal text. I would like to introduce at this time our team that I'm very proud of. These are, these are people that have worked in this project for three years. Our chief architect is Mr. Mike Swain, who is one of the top medical building architects in the country. He brings 40 years of experience in building beautiful and functional medical offices. He will present the technical portion of the design. Next, Mr. Bill Holman, who has more than 30 years of experience in planning and development of business, will complete the presentation in more detail of more unanswered questions. All of us would be here to answer questions. Thank you very much for your attention. I promise this city and its citizens that if this project is approved, it would be beautiful, functional, low-impact, and friendly to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Michael Swain, and I'm the principal of WPSA Architects in Irvine, and we are the ones that are responsible for the design of the project. And we'll just kind of walk you through. The building has got two levels of parking that are both subterrane. They each take, they each use the natural grade of Old Newport Avenue for entrance/into the parking. The lower parking, you enter from the right. The upper parking, you enter from the left. The building has a, the steering elevator that's on Old Newport to give it a presence and to define the entry for participants, for patients.
Mr. Swain, we have about five minutes left of your presentation, just so you know how to...
All right, we'll go through this very quickly.
Thank you.
The exterior elevations were created based on the height requirements of the site, and we can see that further in some of the studies we did. Go back one. These are the contours that were developed by a civil engineer based on the original sites on the site, the original elevations of the site. These studies indicate that we are, the green area is the site limits, the height limits, and you can see that one area of the building that projects above the height limit, which is the area that we're looking for forgiveness on. The alley side of the building is on the lower, and you can see that at equal elevation to the building on the left, current existing building, and the Old Newport Boulevard elevation on the top. Some more elevations, some pretty pictures of some of the design elements of the building. One of the Planning Commission's requests was to reduce the mass of the steering elevator, and this rendering indicates where we have done that. We brought down the stair tower to reduce the mass of it and to make it more transparent. Any questions on that portion?
What are the exterior materials on the building?
They're going to be stone and stucco, and some metal panels in certain areas.
On the alley side, you mentioned it was the same height as the building next to it, but if I remember correctly from looking at your plans, isn't that height from the alley elevation up to the top roughly 32 feet?
It, yes, it is.
I, okay, and you're saying the building next to it is 32 feet also?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Curry, councilman, I'll make this very quick, since I have 30 seconds left. My name is Bill Holman. I'm with the firm of Michael C. Adams and Associates, and we're representing Dr. Shulian in this case. I wanted to just emphasize three issues that we know are very important to the neighboring community, as indicated in the letter that you received over the weekend and the petition. As this project was designed, the three issues that we really tried to focus on were parking, traffic, and land use compatibility. We all know that alley and parking access are major concerns to the neighbors, and so the current property, which has 22 parking spaces that come off of that alley behind Homewood, all of those parking spaces and access to this property will be eliminated, and we'll have 122 parking spaces that will either be on Old Newport or accessed solely from Old Newport. The project actually adds parking spaces on Old Newport. It does not take away parking from other existing businesses, as was alleged in the letter that you received. Secondly, traffic, we all know traffic is a major citywide concern, and that's why, as part of the traffic analysis of this project, Coonsman Associates analyzed 17 intersections, and that traffic study concluded that there was a less-than-1% impact on any of those intersections during the peak hours. In fact, the contribution, the addition of this project to traffic on Old Newport is less than 8% of the daily traffic on Old Newport, so this project does not double traffic on Old Newport, as been alleged. It's a very modest increase, and it can be accommodated by Old Newport. Finally, on the issue of compatibility, within the current block today, there are 10 buildings from Beacon down to Catalina. Half of those buildings that exist today are at floor area ratios that exceed 0.5, and so since they exceed the new general plan, they're considered non-conforming. The issue that you have with owning property on this block with the new general plan is that you, without some sort of incentive, there is no feasible way to redevelop the property, and so what Dr. Shulian is asking for is basically a modest increase in the floor area ratio to allow the consolidation of these properties, the redevelopment of these 1950s-era buildings, to be done in a manner that's economically feasible. There are 39 conditions of approval. There are 23 mitigation measures. We're very happy that the Planning Commission and the staff worked very hard to ensure that the day-to-day construction impacts, noise, everything else were acknowledged as this project goes forward. In conclusion, I wanted to thank Sharon, I wanted to thank Jaime, and the entire staff for their willingness to meet with us many, many times to come up with a project that we think is going to be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. You mentioned that you were adding parking in Old Newport?
That's correct. Currently, there are two on-street parking spaces in front of the 328 building. There's a slide, I think, at the very beginning that shows that building.
I believe I counted three. There's one that's painted green, and then there's two other cars that park in there. So I think there's three. But also, wouldn't the parking space that's in front of the attorney's next door have to be eliminated for site distance reasons, because your driveway comes out right at the property line? So you have actually a net, you haven't added any new parking on the street?
No, the traffic engineer did not recommend removal of... No, the, the traffic engineer did not recommend removal of that parking space. Would the, as the, can you show the original slide with the seven spaces? There, the, okay, stop. Right, as, as the project was designed, there are seven spaces planned between the two proposed entries to.
That's right, and you have to remove three of those for site-distance reasons for the northerly drive.
That's correct. The, the three to the left would be.
Now, look at the distance between those, from those three spaces up to the northerly drive. Now go down to the southerly drive. Right there.
Mm-hmm.
There's a parking place in front of that attorney's office that's going to cause the exact same site-distance problems that you have up here. So that parking place, in order for safety, if you're going to put your driveway there, needs to be removed too. So in effect, you really have no new parking spaces being added.
Well, that's new information to us. We weren't aware of that. Okay. I, I just happened to walk and visit the site and noticed that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Let me invite the public to come forward now and, and comment. If I could ask eh, everyone, out of courtesy to everyone who's here, to limit your comments to no more than five minutes. I understand there may be some consolidated comments to be made. The public comment period is now open.
Good evening, eh, Mayor Curry and city council members. My name is Philip Lugar. I'm sorry?
You can just, you can just come up when he's done and just tell, tell your name. Don't need to sign a card.
All right, sorry. Again, my name is Philip Lugar. I reside in District Four, Newport Beach, and I'd like to speak in favor of the project. I've briefed the planning commission eh, items and also the recommendations from staff, and I find that the project is going to be a wonderful and, and beautiful addition to the city of Newport Beach, and I hope that we all do support the general plan amendment to the one-point-zero FAR. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lugar. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a question. Did you get a copy of the document?
Please state your name, please, sir. State your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Jay VanderWaal.
Yes, I believe you got a copy of the car spot, sir.
Did you members get a copy of that document?
Yes.
All right. My home is eh, across the back alley on the deck side, on the backside of the project, and what has been presented to you this evening so far is not quite the way the real situation is. Eh, I don't doubt the location and all the other things, but as to the height of the project, as you know, that the alley is about eighteen feet above the Old Newport elevation. It's about eighteen feet up. There's about thirty feet of that old hill that used to be there, about thirty feet horizontally that is still there, eighteen feet high. And so in the design that they have made for the project, eh, they start at ground level, so to speak, at Old Newport, and then they go up to the higher level that is flush with the alley. Now, and they use that alley elevation as the elevation where they measure the height of the building. So the building has this kind of a shape. However, on the, I, I think you can see it from here, here is the alley, and there is that hill sitting there, but when they do the project, this pile of dirt, the eighteen feet high, is going to go to the dump. They're going to haul it out. It's not going to be there. Therefore, after that is done, all the way from Old Newport Boulevard, all the way to the location of the alley horizontally, is going to be a flat area. So now, the ground zero location of the project, in front of the dirt, is Old Newport Boulevard, but it's going to be all the way back now. So therefore, we have, on the, on the lower level, there will be two garages, for about twenty-five feet high, and then the two layers of building on top of that. The building is not thirty-two foot high, it is fifty-eight feet high. The building is two-hundred-and-fifty feet long, so we'll be looking from Old Newport Boulevard at the building, two-hundred-and-fifty feet by fifty-eight feet high, not thirty-two feet high, for the entire length of the building. It is a massive overrun of the thirty-two feet height that the local zoning permits. Therefore, it is not possible at all in any way to approve that kind of a project. I'm a developer myself, I understand. I, I deal with city or council or, or the county frequently. I know how the system works. I've been in business for forty years in real estate, and as a developer, I know exactly what we have to deal with, with City Hall. So I want to make it clear to you, and if you look at the drawing that you have seen there, where that waves up, they totally ignore the height that it was here, because when you remove that pile of dirt, well, there is not some empty air there, and two garages sitting there for the cars. So the real construction height is fifty-eight feet. And because of that, that is so far in excess of the thirty-two feet, that it is totally unapprovable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let's eh, out of, out of courtesy to all the speakers, let's, if we can refrain from applause. Thank you, sir. The next speaker, is there another speaker would like to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good council members. My name is Tom Baker. I live on Homewood Drive. The developer is requesting an amendment to the GP to increase the allowable FAR. The site is in a sensitive transitional area from com, commercial area to residential. The increasing impacts of Old Newport Boulevard corridor on our residential neighborhood has resulted in an incremental diminution of the quality of life for the residents. The resident's issues have been documented in a letter forward to the city in two thousand and six with a list of concerns and issues. We should analyze this proposed amendment with the transitional area in mind. We have basically a three-year general plan passed by the residents, who appear to be happy with it, and it contains very few amendments. Perhaps the staff could review what these amendments are at a later time. Presently, we have a develop, developer who wants to amend the GP to double what is allowed. For a developer, it makes sense. The developing will be quite profitable, but what about the other ramifications? What type of precedent will be established? Will every other developer now request a FAR to maximize their profit? Will this precedent be applicable not only to the Newport Beach Boulevard, Old Newport Boulevard corridor, but to the entire city? The potential precedent of this amendment will be detrimental to the entire city. General Plan Policy, Land Use Three Point Two encourages the enhancement of the corridors that are complementary. This corridor has businesses of smaller structures with low commercial intensity, and the proposed FAR of twenty-five thousand square feet will result in a contrasting growth structure with a significantly increased commercial intensity. This large structure in an area of small businesses will contrast greatly with it. The structure is two-hundred-and-ninety feet long on the, on the Boulevard, which is approximately a football field long. It will have a height of somewhere between forty to fifty. It wasn't clear, so we're talking roughly a four or a five-story structure or appearance. Where on the, the Old Newport Boulevard corridor is there a building as high as that one that is being proposed? The proposed is definitely not complementary nor compatible with the area. A FAR of five, of point, of zero-point-five is significantly more compatible with the area, and we could produce a structure which will enhance the value that distinguishes Newport Beach as a special place to live for its residents. The proposed amendment for increased intensity is stated to be consistent with the General Plan Policy Three Point Two. However, the allowable current FAR of zero-point-five, without an amendment and without any concerns of adverse precedent, is also consistent. The General Plan Land Use Three Point Two is best served with a FAR of zero-point-five, as it currently exists. The proposed site is, is in a sensitive transitional area, and I'd like to address Land Use Five Point Two Point Two, which addresses this transition and the buffering of the residential property. This, this project results in a thirty-two-foot building, which is about two-hundred-and-fifty feet long on the commercial and residential alley. This growth structure, some will say, looks like a warehouse with windows, and it overpowers the adjacent single-story residential properties. There are many concerns of the neighborhood, privacy, lighting spillover from this building.
Five minutes are expiring. You sum up eh, some final comments?
Oh, you want, I can summarize.
Briefly?
Okay, there is briefly no transition, transition from the commercial to the residential and no buffer. Another thing is the Charter Section Four Point Three, where the number projected hours, when you take into account the effect onto the accumulation, this, this proposed amendment will give forty percent of the accumulated one hour, one hundred hours to the developer. If you look at what, what proportionally, what is he compared to the rest of the, the area, it appears that he's taking unfair advantage of the system.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually a longtime resident of Newport Beach. My family have owned the property.
Please state your name, sir.
Sure, I'm sorry. Mark Abrams. My family's owned property on Catalina Drive for fifty years. When I look out my front door, I see the hospital. We're, you know, joking that it, we were in the light of the hospital. When I look out from my front yard, I can see the, the law firm building, and I will be able to see this new structure, which I, I don't believe is compatible with the neighborhood. I too live under the general plan. I live in a zone that used to be R-three. I was shocked when it was downzoned to R-two. Okay, so all my plans for building an R-three structure were just completely thrown out. I'm sorry, that's, you know, life. You know, we, we live in a city that has a general plan, and I think they should honor the general plan. There are several things that, that impact eh, this area of Newport Heights. The A marketplace down at the end does not have sufficient parking. They park on Catalina Drive. There is a oncology building that's on the corner of Catalina and Old Newport. They do not have sufficient parking. They park their employees on Catalina Drive. With this new structure and what they're proposing, these employees are also going to be parking on the residential streets. Because of the, the limited parking and the size of the structure, they should not be allowed to build a one-point-oh FAR structure. I am encouraging the council to decline all of the amendments for height, for the encroachment, and the parking credit for this particular project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Eric Sanders. Appreciate your time this evening. I was just thinking, as I was sitting there, that this is probably the second long meeting I've sat through this week. Eh, my wife and I attended a Boy Scout Court of Honor here in Newport Beach on Sunday night, and eh, it was a pleasure to be there, but it was a long meeting as well. Three young men here and eh, three young men received their Eagle Scout, and eh, and I was thinking, as I was sitting here, what a shame it would have been had one of those young men been held to a different standard to receive his Eagle Scout than the other two. It would have put a black eye on the scouting program, would have truly been a black eye to the boy who would have been held to a different standard, would have been a black eye for anyone associated with that program. And as I was thinking about that tonight, I thought, the same is really true tonight. To have one homeowner or landowner within this neighborhood, transitional neighborhood, to be held to one standard, and, and the neighbors or the residents in our buildings and our homes and our heights to be held to a different standard would really be a shame. It's already been stated, I agree with my neighbors who have talked about the general plan. The general plan purposefully, through the vote of the public, through the citizens, other homeowners, as well as myself, eh, adopted the general plan, voted for the general plan at a zero-point-five. I would completely endorse what my neighbors have stated, that they would encourage the city council to send this back to the planning commission for consideration of a project that would comply with the integrity of the general plan. As it relates to the general plan and the discussion in the general plan about the transition from, from the resident or from the commercial buildings on Old Newport to the residences eh, in that transi, transitional area, I would hope that the, if this gets, I would hope that you would send this back, and it would be considered, how can this project be made compatible to all of the full integrity of the general plan? Appreciate your consideration on this item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Don't be shy, come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Tom Adams. I live at four-sixty in Westminster, right up the street from the new proposed buil, it's a beautiful building. Doctor, I gotta hand it to you. Your building on Coast Highway is gorgeous. I, I go there. I'm serviced by you. However, however, this building is just way too big for our neighborhood. I live right up the street from Hospital Road at Old Newport Boulevard. There are five streets coming into that intersection, which is less than three-hundred feet from his driveway, proposed driveway. The traffic is intense some days of the week, especially Monday through Friday. On the weekends, we got all the tourists that come to Newport Beach, come on in, spend your money. However, I see traffic right now on Hospital Road backed up all the way around the corner of Old Newport Boulevard and down towards his driveway. I've seen as many as four to six cars backed up waiting to make a left turn onto Old Newport Boulevard between the hours of eight o'clock and five o'clock at night. Sometimes between, between four o'clock to five o'clock, it's really intense. At eight o'clock in the morning, at ten o'clock in the morning, it can be really bad. Now, there's a brand-new medical building on Old Newport Boulevard, just up the street from the proposed building down the street. That building has their doctors and their employees parked in front of my house a half a block away. I know that for a fact because I go to that doctor also. And I understand that, that, that they can only have so many parking spots, but you've got these doctors that back up eh, patients every ten minutes, every fifteen minutes. I go into a doctor's office today, and I, sometimes I can't get a chair. And then on top of that, I see vendors coming in, salesmen coming in, multiple salesmen coming in, and they're parked there too. And there's just not enough spots on Old Newport Boulevard. I hope you disapprove, disapprove his, his eh, one-point proposal and bring it back to the general plan at point-five. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Barbara Rawlings. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I am also a business owner and a property owner on Old Newport Road. I hope you all received my letter-
Yes, we did.
... of January 26th. I would like to speak particularly in respect to the parking concern, and as property owners, we all are concerned about parking and having to provide parking, and I think that's one of the things about this project that I liked the most when I studied the pictures and the layout, was that he is providing parking for his proposed clients. I think it's a definite positive. I think it will enhance our street, and I urge you to approve the general plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Fred Rawlins, without the G. Rawlins, Wyoming, the American Rawlinses. Our family's third generation in Newport Beach, having come in 1912. I live on 300 Homewood, the corner of Catalina and Homewood. We lived there because it's a residential neighborhood. There's a sign that says, "You're entering a residential neighborhood," until a few years ago.
Sir, if you speak in the microphone-
It was a buffer residential zone. Okay? Now, my wife's a teacher. I'm a coach. I'm a Sunday school teacher, and I'm a director in a nonprofit that deals with youth. We're concerned with the faces, the humans, the kids. There are 17 preteens on Homewood in the 300 block, 17. They walk, they bike, they skateboard. They don't park cars. They don't bounce off of cars. I have seen the closest call you have ever seen in your life already. By their own admission, their traffic report, which I contend is very flawed, adds 54 trips to this hospital, to this location, and I'm not against medical buildings or growth, but it's double the size allowable. It breaks the FAR. It breaks, in conjunction with the land use code 3.2 for compatible uses, it breaks with, because they're boutiques and they're restaurants, and if you've heard of the word "bike corridor," there are bikers going down to that beach, just going down there all the time. And that is a five-way stop that is unregulated and is already over-trafficed, and I don't care what they said. I heard them say seven points in intersections were not impacted, and I heard their other experts say 17. You all heard that. One of them is wrong. One of those experts is wrong. It's going to lead to a child's injury or death. I've seen broken bones already. If we add even five of those trips a day, we add 1,500 more potential accidents a year.
Sir, we can't record if you don't speak into the microphone. They're watching you at home, too.
For a fire code, I believe, I found conveniently that all the pictures of the beautiful building that's double the size, that doesn't compatibly fit in and breaks the code in four areas, including the green light traffic report, because 54, there's only supposed to be in that whole corridor of 40 or so parcels, 100 new trips in 10 years. And this will be 54 in one afternoon, so that means the rest of the projects only get to use the other allotted 50 for 10 more years. That's not fair. That's 3 percent of the project, taking 600 percent of the increased proposed traffic. He's getting six times his share if you double the FAR. If you cut him back to half the FAR and assume that cuts back half the traffic, he's still asking for three times more than his share of the green light charter, which was a democratic process for the whole community with much work and expense and a great credit to Newport Beach. Now, do we want to end up like Laguna Beach with faces on the fatalities that we know? That's the difference in breaking and setting this bad precedent in this neighborhood. If it is a compatible medical building and we are going medical, then let's go with the compatible code and what we all agreed on in a democratic process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Luanne Baker. I am also a resident on Homewood, and you have received signatures of many others in that whole area, not just Homewood. I would like to read this brief letter from my neighbor who is 90-something and cannot make it tonight. "Sirs, I have lived on Homewood Drive for 58 years. While we know change is inevitable, that building will be built on Old Newport, that buildings will be built on Old Newport, we never anticipated anything of this size, which will destroy the character of our neighborhood. Please do not permit anything this size to be built." I also have a guess that the project owner will not be living in the area himself, okay? And that therefore he will not have to live with any of the complications. The fact that they say no impact on traffic, no impact on parking, this is not true. We're in a transition area, and we know that there is going to be more traffic. You've already heard about the parking in the neighborhood from the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Joy Sanders, and I live on Homewood Drive as well. I have three concerns about this project. I have lived in Newport Beach on Homewood Drive for eight years now, and I'm a mother of four. And the first concern is, right now, with this medical building and the staff members park, and also at break time, they go around our neighborhood to walk, and I'm okay with that, but they start smoking their cigarettes, which is their choice, but they throw their butts in my gutter. And it ticks me off because I don't like cleaning it up. And I just am concerned about this because it's, there's going to be more staff, and I want to know is, in this project, do they have a smoking designated area? Also, some of the neighbors that I have talked to, unfortunately, these staff members have sat on their back steps, and they get on their cellphones and start smoking, and then they leave their butts by the stairs. And one of my neighbors even said that this is really gross. They spit on their stair, and they left their muta stuff, you know? I'm sorry. But, I mean, could you imagine seeing that on your stair? And then these staff members, they go against the alleyway, smoking on their cellphones, and there's young children outside playing, and the smoke goes in their backyard and into their home. And I just, I don't think that's a good presence. And so, if, when they build the building, I hope that they designate an area for the smokers and the staff area. Another thing that I need to ask is, I just don't understand why this medical building gets an exception on going over regulations. As residents, we, when we build our homes or if we want to do house improvements, we have to live by certain standards. And why do they get this exception? I just, I just don't get it, you know? I just don't get it. And then the last thing I want to bring up is about the safety issue. Like many of the people have said, I have four kids, as I said, and I am worried after school hours to send my little girl across the street because these cars, who, they find out how to cut through Homewood, and they speed up that hill, and they go speed up Beacon, and it is frightening because they do speed, and there are kids out there. And I'm afraid this doctor's going to have to come out and give CPR to somebody, or hopefully that will never happen. And so, these are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanders.
Hi, my name is Katie Sanders, and I agree with my neighbors. I went earlier. I used to ride my bike to school, and because there's not really any sidewalks, especially on Homewood where I live, it was kind of hard to maneuver, and there would be cars, and they'd be going really fast, and sometimes it would be scary to cross those streets because there's cars going, and it's just a transitional area from those busy streets, and I just agree with things that my neighbors have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. I have no doubt-
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Stuart Weed, and I've lived in Newport Beach for over 45 years. It's a small stint in the Bay Area while I was going to school. And I have no doubt that this building will be built. When I came in, we were talking just a little bit about changing the pattern of flights at the airport, and it reminded me of when I first moved here. And the only way you got on an airplane at the airport was by walking out on the tarmac. And the airport was going to make a small change. It was going to grow just a little bit. There weren't going to be any issues with flight or noise, the abatement issues, were not going to be any kind of a problem. And we've seen over the years incrementally, step by step by step, that get eaten away. On 16th Street, there are speed bumps now because the traffic on 17th Street got so bad that everybody moved over to 16th Street and was using it as a thoroughfare, and speed bumps were put on that to prevent that from occurring. I live in a single-family residence on the corner of Clay and Bolsa. I'm afraid to back out of my driveway in the morning. At between about 7:30 in the morning and 8:30 in the morning, not only do you have traffic, but you have the kids that are going to the elementary school, the parents that are bringing them there, the kids that are going to the high school, the additional traffic that's going to the church, kids that are riding their bicycles, to Ensign and parents that are driving them there. I suggest that the traffic patterns that exist are unique in this area because of the destinations that they go to. And now we transition into summertime, when there's no tra, when Newport Boulevard's backed up all the way to the freeway and Pacific Coast Highway is backed up. I, as I know many of the other residents and probably most of the people who work in this building or would come to it, don't come up Pacific Coast Highway. We cut up Cliff Drive, we cut up Dover Drive and across Cliff and come down by the junior high school. And that's a pretty common thing. I think that you're talking with this kind of development about a total change in the traffic patterns of the city. And the beautiful part about this city and about living in Newport Heights is that it is a mature, developed area where we don't have to worry about traffic patterns changing. And I guess that's not true anymore. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor? Sorry. Thank you. Mayor and council, my name's Joe DeSalle, and I've lived here for only 15 years, and I never thought I'd ever come up here to talk to you guys, honestly. You know, I mean, look at, you're all looking at me. But let's talk real life.
And you're on television, too.
Okay, yeah. I should get paid. Let's talk real life. I've watched the medical building at 300 Old Newport, which is about 5,000 square feet, 4,985 exactly. Got 15 parking spaces. Where do you think they all park? On the street, right? Now, do you think it's caused any congestion or problems? Well, let's see. I had my car hit by somebody coming out of the parking lot the wrong way. That was, that was $3,200. Okay. I seen, I had my car hit in the back when it was parked on the street. There's just a lot of traffic from that because they didn't have sufficient parking. Now, one of the problems I see, I think it's good to build there. I think it is blighted. I don't like the old buildings there. I think they should be torn down. But, you know, let's not build a Taj Mahal. That's all I'm saying. This isn't Irvine. This isn't Jamboree Street. Okay? That's the problem. A real problem we have is every morning, we have all these ladies out walking their dogs, jogging, kids on skateboards, and let me tell you, people, when they go to the doctor, they're not in the best mood, and sometimes they don't really feel that good, and they're not the best drivers in the world. And you have the entrance turning in, well, what's going to happen in the morning because how many doctors are going to be there? Quite a few, probably. You have all the old people turning in, people going up Newport. It's going to cause a lot of congestion. There's going to be accidents because there's accidents there now, just from that one medical building, which is small. 5,000 is nothing. So, I believe we should have it. I think we should just kind of shrink it down a little bit. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Richard Walton. I live right up the street from here. While I do support some type of redevelopment, I just ask you guys to, you know, play by the rules that were set, which is to cut it back to a .5 FAR. And when you really look at the map here, you know, on the north side of the building, you have a big slope. You guys know lifeguards in the summertime and the junior lifeguards. You've got a couple hundred kids coming down and going back every single day. And you know with subterranean parking, when there's any type of elevation, you accelerate to get up. So, the potential for someone to be accelerating out of the lower level coming up, I mean, you've got a hazardous potential issue there. Not only that, but think about it, I mean, you can go to Hope Hospital today and look at the subterranean parking. People don't like to park underground. You're not going to park down in the little teeny nook and cranny corner of this, so the chances are is that some percent of those spots are going to be underutilized, and the people are going to look for daylight. They're going to park their cars on the street in our neighborhoods, resulting in more trips and ultimately, you know, a deterioration of the quality of life for our neighborhood. So, one of the gentlemen also mentioned sales reps. You've got sales reps, you've got vendors, suppliers, trash pickup. So, it's not just the people physically coming in every day to do their thing, but you've got the multitude of other people coming in, so you've got a really, a big multiplier effect, or just like a basic economics 101, you know, the multiplier effect, you've got one basic industry job and you've got a five-time multiple. So, for every, you know, practice in there, it's not just the employees, but boyfriends, girlfriends, lunchtimes, and vendors coming in. So, I just ask you just to cut it back to the rules and play by the same rules that we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Curry, council members. Christine Drage, I live just across the street from Mr. Walton, up on Broad Street, just up the street from the proposed building, and I'd like to echo the thoughts of Mr. Walton. I think the real issue here is compatibility. 25,000 square feet, not compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood. I totally encourage development. Let's make it appropriate. Let's make it compatible, and I encourage you to disapprove the current application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drage. Any other comments? Under the wire?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Don Crote. I'm a resident of Newport Heights. I hold a general plan committee designation. I worked on the general plan for three and four years. I have great love and great caring and a lot of respect for both the general plan and the process. I currently hold an advisory chair for the general plan's implementation process, about which many of you are familiar. I told you that story a little bit to tell you this one. We polled our homeowners association, and although a lot of them were absent on vacation, and we got a lot of replies that were approving of the project, and only one disapproving of the project. The person who disapproved the project isn't here tonight. I'm unfamiliar, I'm kind of sad to say, with a lot of the members of the community that I've heard speak tonight. I don't know them. They are off my radar a little bit. They're not on the corridor to St. Andrews, which was an issue before you. They're not so much concerned, I don't think, with the Clay and Orange Rehab Center, and they haven't been involved in some of the other pivotal issues, one of which is traffic calming. I'm not sure. involved in some of the other pivotal issues, one of which is traffic calming. But we have heard a little bit about traffic tonight and I'm, one of the things that the project does for us is eliminate both the commercial and the residential project traffic that's currently on the alley. That'll be gone. Won't be anywhere out there. And I don't think there's going to be any cigarette butts in the alley either because those workpeople are designated to park in the parking areas and they're designated to smoke in the smoking areas within the building or without, out front on the Old Newport side. There is some talk about the honor and being held to a different standard than the democratic process and to play by the rules. But as you all know, the general plan amendment before you is part of playing by the rules. If you don't comply, you can amend the general plan and that's something that's within the process. So it is very much playing by the rules. In the end, there's going to be no more commercial traffic or trash pickup in the alley. So that's going to be completely eliminated. And the elimination of the trips to and from the alley, serving that the residence is there, the duplex is there, and the commercial buildings will all be extinguished. I started working with the applicant over two years ago. And at that time, there was a mixed-use project there and I was very discouraging of the density of the condominiums in that area because they were going to front and they were going to take access off the traffic. So when that, when that traffic and the building went all medical, we, as a community, were very grateful for that and have supported it since then and wrote letters in support of the project. Thank you very much. We'd like to see the general plan amendment upheld.
Question, Don.
Sure.
We've worked on GPAC together. And I do remember when we were talking about Old Newport Boulevard, there was a great concern about transitioning between Old Newport Boulevard, the commercial, and the residential area. And that was one reason that mixed use was initially considered for that area. A number of the residents here have discussed that they don't feel there is a transition. And how would you react to that comment?
Well, I think that taking out the residential components in the general plan sense leaves us without the conceptual transition of residences. But in this particular project, those residences would add access and add traffic onto an already busy alley. So it's a difference between concept and reality. This is a case where it's a lot better for this particular project to take all its access out of Old Newport. On the alley side, we've seen enhanced landscape, enhanced hardscape, and the elimination of all the ingress egress for pedestrian out the alley. So is it taller than the buildings that are there? Of course. The buildings that are there are blighted. Is it below the height limit or at the height limit? Yes, it is. The only part of the building that's over the height limit is the part that you can see in the height limit slide. In fact, a large majority of the exterior is under the height limit. So in terms of the transition, I feel great about this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Crote. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name's Michael Brinkman. I live on Homewood Drive. Much like, I guess, the gentleman doesn't know who I am, I'm not all that familiar with him. We have somewhere around about 120 odd signatures developed in four to five days that are against this project. I believe he had mentioned three or four people that he had found and one couldn't show up. So that I find very odd. I am against the project simply for the precedent it sets. I love development. I'm a real estate broker, so I'm all about profit and maximizing what you can do with your property. However, if you let this happen, what's going to happen with the rest of Old Newport Boulevard? Is everybody going to come up and start running around and consolidating three lots at a time and saying, hey, man, this guy got it. I'm going to go ahead and do it. And that's my huge concern. This gentleman here has done beautiful projects. I've seen them. I think they're fantastic. I think he should develop this, but I think he should simply develop it within the guidelines. So I would go no against this. There's five or six people here, I believe, that would have liked to talk. Is it possible they can stand and state their names so they will know that you-
Sure, just real quickly, maybe just stand and if you're, to show your support for this gentleman's position and-
Alan, David, Ray White, Lloyd.
Hannah, this is 320 Old Wood Drive. This is 232 Old Wood Drive. We all speak about the property.
Okay, you spoke before, sir. Okay.
It can also-
Okay.
Leslie Berry, 424 West.
Thank you.
Roger, 424 West.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Another speaker, please. Come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Anthony Paduano. Just listening to all this, I do agree with most of my neighbors, especially, I don't know this gentleman, the blue shirt here, what he was talking about, the subterranean parking and cars accelerating. My nephew was hit in that exact type situation where a car was accelerating out of a garage. So I know that that's very dangerous and I don't know how else you'd say it, but he had some great points in the fact that who's going to police this? Who's going to police this parking? Are we going to go to our parking permit signs so we know that the neighbors are the ones that are parking in front of our homes? And by the way, I live on Homewood Drive. I didn't mention that, sorry. So that's my big concern is, that's fine and dandy if you guys decide to approve this project, but who is going to handle taking care of the excess, the excess cars and, like a lady had mentioned earlier today, the people walking, that do walk in front of my home as well, smoking, throwing cigarette butts, people are taking breaks, boyfriends, girlfriends, so on and so forth. So I hope you take everything into great consideration. And again, I think it should be developed. I think those buildings are horrible and a bad representation of Newport Boulevard, Old Newport Boulevard, but to throw a 25,000 square foot monster structure right behind our home, totally against. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, let me invite the applicant. If you'd like to make some final comments or summary comments, you or your representative are invited to come to the
I appreciate all the feeling that were expressed here. I think the choice is between, is not between me doing a smaller project or this project. I'm not going to be rich out of this project. This project is barely penciled down at this size. And the choice is doing nothing or doing this project. And I urge the neighborhood to understand me. I would try to do things to make that better, lower impact on the neighborhood. We already have established more things in the alley in terms of to lower the impact of the light, having more vegetations to make this more palatable. But the choice is really not between a smaller building and this building. The choice is doing nothing and all this.
Thank you, Doctor. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the council and recognize Mr. Selich.
Yeah, I've got a question for the applicant. What's going to be the clear height, I guess, for the clearance in the parking structure? And are you going to be painting it white or some light color inside? And what kind of lighting are you going to have in there?
The code requires that where we have handicap parking, that we have a nine-foot-six clear overhead. And in the non-handicap areas, we can have eight-foot-two. And those are code requirements. The lighting would be, again, is dictated by ordinances. And we would require, we would just have the minimum amount of lighting that's required. One thing that-
Are you planning on painting the, any of the surfaces? You're just, you're going to leave in gray concrete?
No, they would be painted. And also, there's daylight that comes in. If you see the lower dark section, you see the two stories of building above, and the darker, that's actually open to the upper level parking. So most of the parking is open to the, to the air.
Mr. Webb?
I have a question related to the handicap or the height. So you're going to have a big sign on one entrance or the other, that one entrance is a handicap entrance and the other one isn't?
No, we have handicap for both levels.
Well, okay, so that, in other words, your entire structure parking is going to handle the nine-foot-six?
In the, yes. I mean, it can. There may be areas that we don't need to because of traffic flow and things like that.
You have a circular pattern to where once you go in, you're trapped. You can't get back out without going-
Right, but in those, in parking spaces, we can reduce the height somewhat.
Okay, so you're just talking about small individual spaces, but everything else will be the nine-six?
That's correct.
Okay. The other council, Councilmember Gardner?
I take it from, when I was looking at the report, it said the staff initially just went with .75. And that was just not discussed? I mean, as soon as it was open, the applicant said no?
No, hi, ma'am. I'm going to ask. I'll come back and maybe discuss that.
Yeah, staff actually recommended to the planning commission that we, that they approved the general plan amendment at a .75 FAR. And our concerns were similar to some of the residents in the neighborhood, just based on the equity of granting one property owner an increased intensity within a corridor of 49 other parcels. We're also concerned with how the, I guess, the scale of the project and compatibility with the older development in the neighborhood that's been developed at .5 and future development in the neighborhood that'll also be restricted to .5. However, the planning commission, when they reviewed the project, felt that 1.0 was appropriate and it was a recommendation to the council.
Thank you. Maybe particularly Ed can probably help here, but if this is granted, the precedent, I see some, some issues here. One is, doesn't everybody then want that? But also, are we, because, and my understanding here is not as precise as it should be, but if everyone else does .5, and some of them couldn't do anything but .5 because of parking requirements and the size of the lots, are we then condemning it, instead of having a rejuvenation, are we really condemning it to two kinds of development? We'll have very grand developments like this, and then nobody will be able to afford to redevelop the others. Remember, that was a concern in Old Croix-en-Del-Mar. And we changed the floor area ratio for replacing buildings and everything. Do you remember that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Uh, no.
Oh, I, well, that's, but, well, maybe, maybe I'm asking, maybe-
I think that was an honest answer.
That, if you go with .5 and you have an old building and you have a certain amount of parking, that you cannot, you just cannot go build, build it any bigger. So you, what is your impetus? What is your, why would you try to redevelop it if you're not going to get even maybe the space you have today?
I think that the way those properties might redevelop, if those property owners chose to request similar general plan amendments, would be to do the same thing with the lot consolidation, which is something that the specific plan has encouraged. With regard to the question of other property owners requesting the same thing, of course, we never know what will happen in the future. But early on, when we were talking to Dr. Shulian, we encouraged him to work with neighboring property owners and pool together and apply for a general plan amendment that would apply to a pretty significant stretch of the corridor. And at least what he reported to us that, was that a number of them were not interested in going through the process. Some were satisfied with what they have today and don't intend to do any more redevelopment. And others were just, I think, not interested in the expense and the process.
Councilmember Webb?
Thank you. I have spoken on the phone to Dr. Shulian. I've met with some of the residents and I've spent a fair amount of time walking the area and have put together some comments that, let me go through them. Most every issue that I have, that I looked at and garnered has already been mentioned tonight, related to the floor area ratios and parking and that type of thing. So let me just go through what I'm looking at. And because one of the things that we have to do if we're going to grant this general plan amendment is to go through the findings that are shown in the resolution of adoption. And in my opinion, as I look at those findings, I think they're flawed. I think those findings can't be justified by what we have received tonight. So I guess, a number of the issues. First is the floor area issue. Is granting a 1.0 floor area ratio going to be an economic stimulus for Old Newport Boulevard properties or just the applicant? As we look at finding number two, it says that this is compatible with the general plan finding LU 3.2. And you read that one, it says, "Enhance existing neighborhoods, districts, corridors for allowing for reuse and infill with uses that are complementary in form, scale, and character and type." True, a medical office building is complementary in type to the, the area adjacent to the hospital and probably in a lot of this area. And possibly, it's, it's complementary in the form and character. But the scale of the project definitely, in my opinion, is not complementary on the basis that this is a transitional area. This piece of property backs up to R1, single-family residential. It doesn't back up to R2, it doesn't back up to R3 or other commercial. So in other words, you have, their backdoor neighbors are, are you and I's house if, from where we live in our single-family detached houses. So I don't feel that, that we can make the finding that it's compatible with 3.2 because it's not complementary to the adjoining neighborhood. The building structure, which is as long as a football field with a street face appearance of four to five stories, may act as an economic stimulus for the area of other property owners in the area. But if you, if a president is granted and everybody else gets to build something that big, I don't think that's what we want to do here. We definitely don't want to double the floor area ratio for this entire area. I think if we grant this general plan amendment, it sends a message that bigger is better. And the city has encouraged increasing densities, increasing intensities. Our whole issue when we went through the general plan was reduce intensity, if I remember No evidence has really been offered that I can see to support a doubling of the floor area for one development and why that is, is in anybody's economic benefit other than the property owner. Sure, if you want to grant everybody in the neighborhood to double their development rights, probably they'll develop sooner rather than later. I just think that the, the doubling of a floor adjacent to the residential area is not conducive and it's not a good transition. When we look at another general plan policy, which is called buffering, it says, and that's 5.22, buffering residential areas. The policy states that require commercial uses adjoining to residential neighborhoods be designed to be compatible and minimize impact through such techniques as incorporating landscaping, decorative walls, so-and-so, and attractive architectural treatment of elevations facing the residential neighborhood. Well, I think that, yes, the vehicular access is being taken off of the alley, so that's good for the neighborhood and that, and that makes it good. But I think, no, it doesn't meet the buffering responsibility. When you look at a 28 to 32-foot-high wall, and again, I appreciate the gentleman talking about Boy Scouts because I went out there and then stood in the alley and I was trying to figure out how far 32 feet is up. And I did my estimating and that type of thing. And the power poles out there are roughly 30 to 32 feet, the top wire. And when I looked at that and said, oh, okay, that's a full 10 feet higher than any of the other buildings that are on that side of the street. So I walked around Homewood Drive and standing in Homewood Drive, looking back over those houses, you can see all of those wires, which means there's going to be a 220-foot wall that can be seen from Homewood Drive. Now, if you look at that and think about it, that's from here all the way out to the parking lot. And that's a wall that's up essentially three stories, because you can build three stories in 32 feet. Okay, so I don't feel that this meets the general plan policy of buffering residential areas. As far as the policy number 5.4, which is development form and architecture, well, yes, the Newport Boulevard side looks really great. If you want a four or five-story building, but it steps up, it's got some wonderful architectural features. I mean, just look at that. That's a, that's a gorgeous building. But when you look at the back door, which is what the residents got to look at, they, it's a solid wall with some windows. Yes, you put some, some, they moved some of the sections of the wall in three or four feet so you can have a little bit more landscaping. But there's no architectural feature back there to make that wall interesting. It's, as somebody mentioned, it was like a warehouse wall with windows. I think that's what it's going to look like. So blank, and the general plan says blank walls should be avoided. So, blank, and the general plan says blank walls should be avoided. Parking credit. This is one that, that, being of a public works background, I've, I've looked at parking issues forever. And this is something that doesn't fall into the general plan requirements. This has to do with a specific area plan that was adopted, I think, back in 1994 or 95. And the guidelines say credit may be given. It doesn't say credit has to be given. So in this particular instance, we're not required to grant parking credits for somebody that can't build enough parking on-site to suit the building that they have. So that, that you begin to look a little bit farther, is the point I was trying to make, is that I can see perhaps that you can offer credit if maybe you're providing a little more parking space on the street. Maybe you could have credit for those. But in this particular instance, as I was trying to point out earlier, you're going to only have four spaces that are left out there. You have four spaces that are there today, and so you're not creating anything new. You have a 400-foot section along Old Newport Boulevard, starting at Hospital Road and going downhill, with those spaces being the only on-street parking. So you really have no supply of on-street parking for any of the other buildings along there either. And if this building's, doesn't have enough parking, there isn't any place else for those people to park. Somebody mentioned as far as using the underground parking is concerned. There are many people that do not like parking structures and will not park in them, particularly ones that have met the standards, but marginally met the standards. It's very difficult to get in and out in the round. So I, I, I think that, that you're going to find a number of people that will spill out of this area and potentially go into the residential areas, because that's the only other place to go. As far as the underground encroachment is concerned, on the, the rear of the building, I think that that's really no particular problem, unless allowing that encroachment, which goes into within two feet of the property line or three feet of the property line, requires you to put shoring up in the alley and close off the alley during construction. Then you have the residential areas being impacted during the construction for that site. I, I've asked a couple of questions as far as the, the, the specific area planned for public improvements. It's interesting, when you look at the public improvements, they show that a enhanced pavement crosswalk is supposed to be installed as a part of these improvements. Well, lo and behold, when you look at the diagram in the specific area plan, that crosswalk leads right smack dab into the middle of the northerly driveway of this property. Does that mean that we should modify the specific area plan to allow this development? When I went out and looked at it a little bit closer, and when you listen to the statements that people have made about how busy this is at, at, at business time, where you have cars backed up at the intersection, I think it's going to be very difficult for people to turn in and out of this driveway and get access from the northerly driveway, which forces them down to the, to the southerly driveway, which is supposed to be the, the less desirable driveway. So I think that, that, again, we have created a situ, this creates a situation where you do not have the, the ease in use of, of the parkage. You have a situation where you have an, an inconsistency with the specific area plan as far as the enhanced pavement crosswalk coming out in that area. And I haven't seen anything discussion, any discussion about the other things, like utility undergrounding is supposed to be provided, along with streetlights and frontage improvements. There's one section which the staff says doesn't apply because there's an alley there instead of a property line, because the specific area plan says that you have to have wall articulation, which means you have your vertical wall, but you need to have a step in and up, which would offer some interest in this particular project. So, in summary, this project is just playing too big, and it's out of character for the neighborhood. The above comments point out the problems with doubling the intensity for this project and question the compatibility with the new general plan's concept of limiting intensity. If this general plan amendment is approved, it may lead to further requests to allow for added intensity to improve the economic position of the developer, which may not necessarily be in the best interest of the city's goal to limit intensity and developments and keep track of big issues at a specific level. So it's my recommendation that we deny this request.
Thank you, Mr. Rosansky.
Thank you. You know, I've sat here and listened to the, the comments of the residents and my fellow council members, and I, I respect all of your opinions. I mean, you folks live in that neighborhood. Certainly, you're aware of conditions in your neighborhood. But I also understand what the goals of the city have been for this area, for Old Newport Boulevard in particular. And all along, at least the six years that I've been sitting on city council, we've, we have looked for lot consolidation. We've looked for renewal of that area, and we had, we've seen some, but not a lot. And especially with the economic times the way they are, we're probably not going to see a whole hell of a lot for a while. You know, originally, this, this project was zoned, I believe, for multi-use. It could have allowed for an FAR much higher than the 1.0 that we're talking about tonight as a mixed-use project. Dr. Shallean approached me probably a couple of years ago with a much larger project, and I, I discouraged him at the time because I thought it was out of character for the neighborhood. It was going to have seven or eight condominiums there coming in off the alleyway. It would have been an office building almost of equal size to the one that's proposed now. And I told him, I said, "It's just not appropriate." You know, "It's just too much." I said, "You need to go back to the drawing board," and he has. He's, he's eliminated the residential. I think the most important benefit, and I think it addresses a lot of the concerns that were expressed here tonight, is that there is not going to be any access through the residential neighborhood to this property any longer. There won't be access off the alley. You won't have people coming out of the backs of his buildings that are there now. They park up there. They enter those buildings from the alley. I could see where people might walk out and go walking down Homewood or walking down any of these streets, or decide to park in front of your homes because the buildings are easily accessible at this point from there. But, you know, the way the project is designed now, all the entrances are off of Old Newport Boulevard. I've looked at the drawings here. It's, it's more than a, a tenth of a mile from the southerly portion of his building, just to the intersection where Homewood hits Old Newport Boulevard. So you're talking about, you know, six or 700-foot walk before you're going to even get to Homewood Boulevard. So, you know, I just don't see a whole lot of people deciding, well, I'd rather walk six or 700 feet than park at, at the building. So I think the fact that the access is being eliminated from the rear of the building into the alley is going to be a big benefit for the neighborhood, and that's why I am a supporter of this project. Don talked about buffering, and Nancy also talked a little bit about transitions. And, you know, it's not ideal, obviously. We don't have, you know, a commercial zone and then, you know, like a multi-tenant zone and then a residential zone. We, we didn't build that into the general plan here. And so, again, when Dr. Shallean approached me with this idea of a, of a commercial building, an office building down below, and residences above, and, you know, there really was no buffer, I thought, to the neighborhood. But again, the fact that the access is coming in off of Old Newport Boulevard, the fact that there is no access through the rear of the building, I do believe provides a transition. Some of the speakers talked about, some of my fellow council members talked about the height of the building. And, you know, height in a commercial zone, I believe, is measured from existing grade, and despite what Mr. Vanderwall, I think it was, said about, you know, cutting out and really having a, a much larger building, that's not how it's measured here in the city. And quite honestly, I'm looking at the drawings here that came with the project plan, and even much of the rear of the building is below 32 feet. There's only a, a small portion that actually touches the 32-foot line. So, and even in a residential neighborhood, I believe you can build up to 28 feet, you know, and slope your roof. So literally, they could build a residential building just as tall as the buildings that are being proposed here. The buildings aren't, the building isn't flat on the back either. It's, there is some articulation. There is some landscaping, which will also serve as a buffer for this project. So, you know, taking it all into account, I am a supporter of this project. I think it is a good project for the neighborhood. I think it'll be the catalyst for further redevelopment on the street. I think it's a special property. I don't think that all properties there will qualify for this type of a general plan amendment because either they won't consolidate lots, they won't have additional parking by closing driveways on the street. They won't, they won't provide the necessary, what I feel is necessary buffer between the residential and the, and the commercial by eliminating access to the alleyway, such as, as being proposed in this project. In addition, you know, this is, the, the property's not backing to somebody's backyard. It's backing to an alleyway. And I believe the homes that are there, people are not getting, it's not their front door. You know, this is an alley behind their home as well. So, you know, we're not talking about a commercial building backing right up to somebody's home. There is a bit of a transition there as well. So based upon all these considerations, I am in favor of the project. And I'm going to make a motion that we, excuse me, one other thing I did want to add. I did a little calculation here while we were discussing this. And based upon the reduction in the square footage that will be necessitated by the elimination of the three parking spaces at the planning commission, the, the FAR, if you figure it out on this project, is really .95. It's not .1, although it's not... Don, I'd expect more from you than I do from the audience. Please. It is, it isn't .1. It is .95, and although I'm sure most of you would agree or think that that's too much as well, it is at least a little bit less than what is being represented. So again, I will go ahead and make the motion to... Got to find out what the recommendation was here. Okay, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, adopt the mitigated negative dec, well, all the, all the findings here in the staff report.
I wonder...
As, as adopted by the planning commission.
Okay.
I'll second that. Mr. Siller?
Yes, please, second. Let that councilman wanted to speak.
I just, I'm wondering, because I, if this is approved, I think there's some additional conditions that would help. And so I'm, I'm wondering if we could vote just on the approval of the floor area initially. And if that passes, then we could discuss the conditions. But I, I hate, or should I just add the conditions, I discuss the conditions now that I think should be added if it is approved? Well, you made the motion, so...
Well, if, why don't you, why, let's hear what the conditions are that you think should be added.
One is the, concerning the trash, which I believe is, will be off the alley. Is that correct?
Staff report says it's off the alley.
Yeah. So is, is, I'm asking the, the owner.
Hi, Hi-Mae, can you come up and clarify that for us? Or the applicant?
The, the trash enclosure isn't shown on the plans. However, we did discuss that with the architect. And it was said that the most logical place for the trash enclosure would be located off the alley.
Primarily because there's hardly trash pickup for the alley.
Well, I have, it seems to me that if that's where it is, that the hours 10:00 PM to 8:00 PM are not acceptable. I think 10:00 PM is way too late for a residential area, and they should be able to pick up the trash by 6:00 or 7:00 PM if they're going to be going down in a residential area. There's something that says on page nine of the planning...
Well, before you, Pat, what would you feel is appropriate, just so?
I said 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, I would think.
So from when to when?
From 7:00 PM to...
Oh, 7:00 AM, you're saying?
7:00 PM to...
Trash is prohibited from being picked up between 7:00 PM...
No, no, no.
I didn't know. I wasn't clear.
Between 7:00 PM and 8:00 AM?
Yeah, so that there wouldn't be a late-night pickup at 10:00 PM or something, then.
I understand.
Okay.
Before, does the applicant, can you step forward, please? Someone representing the applicant? Can you address her concern, please?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand what your proposed amendment is.
It says in, as a condition, that there'd be no trash pickup between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. And 10:00 PM seems to be much too late to be picking up trash in an area if you're going to be on the alley. If you were on Newport Boulevard, it probably wouldn't make as much of a difference. But if you're going to be on that alley, then you're going to be disturbing neighbors if you've got a big trash truck coming at 10:00 PM.
So the question is, can you have your trash picked up by 7:00 PM? I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. I'm assuming that the, the trash collection is handled by the city's collectors. Now, it's by private, we just, we just approved a brand-new guy. I'm sure he's got nothing to do.
I'm sure he'd be happy to pick up before 7:00 PM.
Yes, we'd be happy to agree to that condition, I think.
Okay, so I'll make that part of my motion.
All right. Secondly, in the staff recommendation, they had, as far as the windows in the back along, again, along the alley, that they should have automatic shades or opaque glass. Those two were eliminated in favor of just having automatic lights turn off at a certain time. And again, since this is, there are residential windows there, I'm wondering why we wouldn't have either the shades or the opaque glass to provide some privacy to those people who are living directly opposite.
Okay, Hi-Mae, can you tell us why the planning commission eliminated that language?
They, they just thought it was a little too much, and they felt that the auto dimming was sufficient to control the lighting impacts on the residential neighborhood.
Well, I happen to disagree, so I would like to make that a condition. Yes.
Another thought the planning commission had was that in a medical office, that shades would, in all likelihood, be drawn anyway without the condition.
They wouldn't have, all right. Anyway, and then my, my third one is that on page nine of the planning commission report, it says that this does not comply with landscaping pertaining to the planting of trees. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. On the proposed plans, they have the required number of trees. However, on the plans, they're shown, I think, three or four of them are within the public right-of-way. So when the project comes back for final design, they'll have to relocate those trees all within the property.
But there will be sufficient trees and landscaping. That's not what I meant.
Yeah, my discussion with the architect, there shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. So, those would be them, my, one of them would be the trash, and the second would be the windows.
Okay, well, the trash, we've agreed to. I guess, has to do with the, the lighting.
Mr. Mayor?
Well...
Let's, let's see, the applicant's, I, I think the issue is, can we put shades or opaque windows on the back windows?
Yes, we agree to that.
Okay.
The, however, just one more comment, that Title 24 requires that all the lights be on timers or automatic sensors. So the lights, if the rooms aren't occupied, the lights would be off anyways. And that's, again, a code requirement for energy requirements. So...
Thank you. Before we leave that, Hi-Mae, are there opacity standards, or it'd be nice to be a little bit more specific than opaque windows?
No, actually, Mr. Siller probably be more qualified to answer that, as he's an architect. That is a similar condition in Santa Ana Heights for properties that are but the REQ district. That's a lot of those office parks. The rear windows are required to be opaque, and I know the project that we have required that, and it passed the building code.
So, so when you say, I mean, do they not allow light, or you just can't see through them?
It allows light. You just can't see out.
So it doesn't...
It's like a film.
So there's still light coming from the windows. So opaque windows are really not going to address Councilman Gardner's issue?
Well, no, I do think it's privacy. It's a privacy. Yeah, so that they would, if I were living there, I would feel a little bit more private that knowing that there weren't just people looking out.
Okay, Mr., are you done, Councilman Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
I addressed the item related to the site distance from the southerly driveway. I'd like to have a condition added that the southerly driveway be reviewed by the traffic engineer and that parking spaces that impair the site distance, for safe site, site distance, be prohibited. And what this means is that the parking, that at least one parking space on the property next door...
Yeah, you're talking about the property next door, not their property.
Right. But we have the right to, to control all public on-street parkings as far as site distance is concerned.
All right, I, I'd make that part of my motion as well.
Can I just have a question before we go on? This will be cut, the building will be cut by 600 square feet. And how does that, meaning, is there a possibility that that could mean more articulation of that back wall?
That's a possibility. It's also a possibility of just... It's also a possibility of just the way that we have the stair and elevator towers designed, we're going to try to reduce that mass and take some square footage out of there also.
Okay. Well, I would, again, and this would not be official, but make a recommendation that the consideration be given to the articulation in the back, again, to make it less of a wall and more neighborhood-friendly.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, yeah, I'd just like to just comment on my support of Councilmember Rozansky's motion. This is really a difficult site to deal with, and I have to say, I originally wasn't wild about the redesign of the site that was going to increase the floor area to this, to this extent. But when you, when you take a look at what the property owner has to work with, the topographic changes, the fact that it's such, there's really no room to create the transition that Councilman Webb was referring to, and I thought they did a pretty darn good job as I sat down and went through the drawings and looked at them, at making that transition. The transition really becomes how they treated the alley, how they took, as Councilmember Rozansky said, they restricted the access off the alley. There's going to be some landscaping back there, other improvements that will make it look better to the homes. There's no access, minimal interference to the, to the homes. And then you've got the topographic issues you have to deal with going out to Newport Boulevard, and I don't see how you could have come up with a much better design for this piece of property and still create something that has some good economic value for the city. I mean, our decision is, do we want to sit here and have three old buildings just sit there for years, or get some good economic development for our city that doesn't overburden the neighborhood? And is to, I think I finally understood your question. And I don't think there are going to be a lot of opportunities for this to happen, so I think we need to take advantage of the, of the fact that we do have the opportunity to get some consolidation here and get a new, good building. There might be one or two others possibly that pop up over the years, and as far as the intermediate buildings, hopefully, the fact that we have a couple of good buildings there will be enough incentive for those people to improve their buildings, even though they're not going to be able to take advantage of a lot of extra square footage. But the rent structures will go up, and all boats will rise. So, like I said, I wasn't originally wild about it, but after studying the drawings and hearing the testimony, I've come to the conclusion that it's a good design.
Thank you. And I would, I would just say that in 2006, when we were considering the general plan and what to do with this parcel, we were aware at the time that we were significantly reducing the economic value of these parcels by the action we were taking. And, and the, we were, you know, rushing to get something to the ballot and to the voters and to make the traffic counts balance, and the answer was, well, the applicant could, or the property owner can seek a general plan amendment and come back and redevelop the property. And for three and a half years, he's been working to do that. He had more highly-dense proposals that, in working with the community, that were rejected, and I think now we sit upon a plan that will in fact result in positive economic impacts on the community. And I agree with Councilmember Selig that it's a false choice to suggest that you can do this at half the FAR and make the project economically successful. I just don't think that's going to, to work. So it's either this, or it's leave the property as it is, and I don't think that's a viable option for, for the property owner, and I don't think it's a good option for the city. So the motion by Mr. Rozansky on the floor is to approve the staff recommendation with the appropriate conditions regarding trash on the alley, windows, and parking as offered by Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Webb.
Actually, I didn't adopt the window portion.
No, on the windows. Okay, shall we talk about the windows a little further? Mr. Rozansky?
No, I, I mean, I agree with the other two comments. I don't, you know, I don't agree with the opaque windows.
So this is.
I think that, you know, as far as light goes, the medical office building, I wish I could find a doctor that would work past 5:00 o'clock, so I don't think that there's going to be a lot of. Excuse me, sir, I'm talking.
Okay, let's.
As I.
All right, let's.
Are you finished, sir?
Maintain our courtesy.
Are you finished, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. As I said, I don't think you're going to see too many people working past 5:00 o'clock in these buildings. Again, you know, if these were homes that were built there, you wouldn't expect to see opaque windows. I mean, I have, I live on an alleyway, and the guy across the alleyway, for me, doesn't have opaque windows. So I think it's, you know, with the light dimming, that'll prevent the problem of spillover light into these homes unless someone's actually working in the office, which, again, I don't see happening. I don't see that as an issue, so, you know, I think that would materially affect the desirability of renting space in that building, of the, just the overall building, to not allow someone to look out if they wanted to look out, so I, I don't.
All right, so the motion then is to approve the staff recommendation with the conditions regarding the hours of trash pickup and the parking requirement as suggested by Councilmember Webb. Are there any further comments?
Does this include the findings and the resolution?
Includes the entire staff recommendation.
Okay, well, then I'd like to add one more finding, that this, this approval does not set a precedent for in at least four areas on future development within the area, and that each new development will need to stand on its own.
No, I would, I would agree to that.
All right. All right, so you've heard the three additional conditions to the staff recommendation, so you know further discussion, please vote.
With Councilmember Webb voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. We're now open for public comments. Madam City Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anyone wishing to make public comments on non-agenda matters, please step forward. And if everyone, please be courteous to the speaker as you're, as you're leaving by taking your conversations outside, please. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Hi, my name's Barbara Hughes, and it's a non-agenda item that I believe I need to address with you, Councilmember Rozansky, as I live in your district. I have a big problem with parking citation, well, parking. On the 27th of February, I came out to go to work, and my car had been towed. Well, so, actually, I thought it had been stolen, so I called the police department. They said, "No, it had been towed," because I had, they tow four, five or more outstanding parking tickets, and I had seven, so, or six, which I knew nothing about, and so they gave me the citation numbers, and they were all for street sweeping. Two of them also were for a registration violation. They, four were for, from December, or, excuse me, January 2007, and throughout 2008. There were, the last two were within the last six months. So I went to the DMV, the police department said they have an internal system for tracking citations, because I knew that I'd paid these because I had to get my registration for my car. So they said I had to get proof of payment, so I went to the DMV, because that's where I paid the original citations, and they have apparently since changed their system. So instead of when you make your payment, instead of showing what your payment is for registration and whatever citations, it just says a lump payment sum. They do have a code, though, that says it was, if it was for parking citations, it just doesn't list the actual citation. So I have that. The towing company says that they can't release my car until I pay these, or get the release from the Newport Police Department. Right, you know, besides the general inconvenience, there are safety issues now. Luckily, I don't work too far from my house, but I have to walk from, between 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning to get to work on time. And then there's this additional financial burden that to date is almost, it's $493 just for the towing, that since I paid the tickets, shouldn't have occurred. And so I just, I'm just asking to, ask you to maybe direct one of your staff members to help me, to tell me what I should do, because I have no options. I don't know what to do.
I'd be happy to take care of that for you. I'll get your email and phone number afterward.
Thank you so much.
Sorry you had to stay late.
Oh, that's okay, it was very interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Any other public comment? Please step forward. Mr. Crote?
After all this, Don Crote, Newport Heights, after all the comments about traffic tonight and presence of.
You better not be asking for traffic, call me, Don.
In the presence of Dr. Batum. I did want to do almost exactly that. I did want the council to, shall we say, dig deep. The residents in the area are delighted with the circle, but they're not delighted with the temporary look that's been cast upon it. And we understand that that's what you had to do to understand if it was even going to fly. But after Newport Harbor High School's hockey team had their picture taken on the, on the traffic circle, we think it's here to stay. So more permanent fixtures, I'm not saying we have to come all the way up to the Corona del Mar level, but anything you could do to move that onto permanence would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
Aren't you going to ask us to remove the stop signs?
No.
That's the way a traffic circle is supposed to work.
With the velocity in this neighborhood and the traffic counts, even as long ago as 2003, when we heard St. Andrews, we, we think the stop signs are probably a good measure to keep the velocity down. It's not exactly Austria yet, not yet.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, public comments are closed. We'll go to item 13, Sunset Ridge Park, approval of amendment number three with EPT Design for additional final design services, and amendment number two with Bonterra Consulting for additional environmental services. Mr. City Mayor?
I think we figured it out, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Batum will make the brief staff presentation.
I guess I drew the short straw. Mayor, members of council, yeah, with a lot of projects, unfortunately, there are times when we have to make amendments to current designs. We don't like to do that, but we feel in this case there are some significant reasons why we need to ask for additional funds for this project for EPT Design and Bonterra Consulting. The amendment for EPT Design is 71,660, and essentially, the additional cost is really around, revolves around the, our need to explore many access road alternatives. There was also some additional design work that we asked for to look at a stacked stone design for one of the retaining walls. So we're requesting that amendment and that amount. As far as Bonterra Consulting, their additional work involves some, an equal amount of additional review on additional designs. Also, some, the issue of disposing soil on the Newport Banning Ranch property was not originally identified in their original scope. And as well, they've also helped us a lot with processing with the regulatory agencies. And another issue that's come up is the number and volume of comments that we've gotten from the draft EIR and the response to those comments has been fairly significant and, quite frankly, not originally anticipated. So we're asking for an amendment in that contract as well.
Especially since we haven't circulated twice and got an extra 30 comments out of it.
So that concludes our report, and we have to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Motion?
Reluctantly. Oh, I was going to say reluctantly, I'll move the recommended action.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I think you all know how I feel, so I'm not going to say anything, but, well, this is an important project for the city, but I just think it's another example of our environmental process gone haywire, and I hope we get it fixed.
Seeing no, no.
Oh, I would just make the comment, you know, as far as, you know, for example, they need a lot, extra hours, all these comments coming in, I mean, the answer should really be in the body of the document. I mean, there's only so many issues people are going to be able to raise, so, I mean, what is the amount of time they're asking for as far as responding to comments? I mean, I thought it was, like, fairly substantial.
When you have opposition to the project?
Mayor, members of council, I think the original estimate was 54 hours, and then they end up getting 75 comments, so it went significantly over.
So what's their new amended amount?
250 hours is their current estimate.
So they need six weeks? Six weeks?
Oh, there's more than one person working on it. We don't have six weeks.
That's really substantial.
Yes, it is. Okay, any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion for reconsideration, Madam City Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we adjourn.